All right, it looks like we've got a quorum. Take this cut off page. Let's go ahead and have a roll call.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Pulapati. Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
Mayor Terry.
Here. So with that, let's move on to... Let's go ahead and have the cable television announcement, please.
So the meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, January 6th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, January 8th at 9:00 a.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. I'm a little rusty. I was supposed to ask somebody ahead of time to do our pledge of allegiance, but since we have our CEO of our chamber here in the audience, and I know she's going to come back up here in a couple of minutes, but Diane, if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then remain standing, and we'll have an invocation by Councilmember Gatewood.
Father, it has been a trying year. Thank you so much for all the many blessings that you've given to the city of Rancho Cordova. Thank you for all the many times you've come alongside us and helped us make the right decision. Please watch over us as our city grows and takes on new challenges. Please bless all the council members and all the citizens so that we make the right decision that's going to help out our cities the most. In your name, we pray.
Thank you, Councilmember Gatewood. So with that, we'll move on to item 5.1, which is presentations and recognizing... or a presentation of a proclamation recognizing Diane Rogers, CEO of...CEO and President of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. This is a long one, so I don't think I'm gonna have to... I'm not gonna read the whole thing here. But we're really proud of your 10-year anniversary with our chamber. I think I met you the first few months of actually that, and it was the year before I even got on council. So very excited. So, "Given a recognition of Diane and H. Rogers, President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce." I don't know if I ever knew it said "area."
It's a legal name.
Name. So Diane Rogers, President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce, is celebrating her 10 years leading the Rancho Cordova Chamber. Diane oversees the day-to-day operations and program management of the Chamber by developing programs, services, and services that help Rancho Cordova area businesses and their owners and employees. Diane facilitates the growth of new leaders in Rancho Cordova by managing the Leadership Rancho Cordova Program, a nine-month experience that develops community leaders, activists, visionaries, and advocates dedicated to the future of Rancho Cordova. And so then I'm gonna drop down here to the end. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby honor Diane Rogers, President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce for her commitment to the Rancho Cordova community. And I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Rancho Cordova to be affixed today. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Speech.
Will we want to take a picture?
Yeah.
Pictures first or me?
Sure.
Okay.
Want to say some words?
Yes, if you don't mind. Thank you, Stacy.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am gratified and humbled by this acknowledgement and want to express my appreciation and thank you to you all. I have a wonderful team of professionals that support us at the chamber that make our programs and projects be as successful as they are, several of which are here with me tonight. We have a board that places a lot of confidence in our program and our team, and we depend on a lot of volunteers, such as our own ambassadors. Sweet 117 is a powerful group dedicated to all that makes Rancho Cordova the wonderful place that it is, and our family here at City Hall, from the facilities team, staff, and you as our elected representatives, and a special shout-out to my friends at the Economic Development Team. I'm pleased to let you know that I'm joined here this evening, thanks to the holidays, with my husband, Ron.
You get to wave hi.
Who's always behind me and supports me and everything. And this year, the holidays provided us the opportunity for my family to be here over New Year's. So I'd like to introduce my father, Dick Hatfield, his wife, and my friend Sally Swanson. My son Andrew and his beautiful wife Maggie.
And the newest joy in our life, Madeline.
Hey, where's her soccer ball?
We're working on that. She did get Arsenal gear for her thing for Christmas.
That's a shame.
So, thank you all very much. And I look forward to the next years that we do this together, and I appreciate the incredible support. It's very humbling to be acknowledged, and I thank you all very much for your time.
All right. Wait, stop. You don't get to just run away. I get to say some stuff.
Hang on, Garrett. I think, actually, in the order of requests, our city manager's gonna go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
He asked before you got here.
No, well, there you go. Not always me. Dang it.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that I've had the pleasure and honor of working with Diane ever since she joined the chamber. And I have to say that the relationship between the city and the Chamber of Commerce has developed into a full-fledged partnership that is laser-focused on making sure that the businesses are in community... in our community are successful. And kudos to you, Diane, and to your wonderful staff, who have worked with our staff and have made this possible. This going back, looking back the history of our relationship with the former Chamber of Commerce Executive Directors, we are in a very different place, and that's because of your leadership, and that's because of the work that we have been able to do together. So I thank you for what you have done, and you have taken our Chamber of Commerce to a completely different level and different caliber. And salute...I salute you for your leadership and the great work you've done for our community.
Thank you, Cyrus.
Thank you, Cyrus.
Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor. So, it was, shoot, seven, 10, 12 years ago that me and you were in a dungey room, and we were just putting back together all the bad, broken-down systems and the loans, and you were like, you know, it'd be great is if we had a business owner from the area, not including David, but that's part of the Chamber of Commerce, the new version that you were building, and said, "We should do this." And so we were all in a room. There was a bunch of us, and I was like, "No, it's not gonna be me, 'cause no one wants to be a council member." You know, it's the $9 pay, and it's the great hours that really just scream to you. And you convinced me with my family. You're like, "Hey, you gotta really talk to the wife, 'cause your dry cleaning bill's gonna be ridiculous." And, you know, it has been an amazing adventure, honestly, with you and me together, from where we started. We...I was on the...just a lowly IT guy helping you out to the part where now I was the mayor of the city of Rancho. And I just want to say thank you. My family says thank you. You've always been a staunch friend. And just the amazing stuff that it took from when we were... The attitudes have totally flipped between the business community and the city of Rancho. I mean, we really feel like we're a partner, and how can we get more stuff done with the city now? And I attest that to you and Cyrus. And, you know, I just want to say thank you for everything you did for my family, my life. I remember when he didn't even have a baby, but was helping you at the Chamber of Office. That's just nuts to see him actually feeding a baby right now. Making your own people. It's crazy. But honestly, your husband's been a great help, and just knowing that you had my back this whole time, it's been a true honor. And let no one know that the whole reason... There's only two people that I can attest to the reason I'm stuck up here. And one of them is you, and the other, of course, is Donald. So thank you for everything you've been doing for my life. Thank you for everything you've done for my family, and thank you for being there when I need you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I'm gonna make mine shorter.
That's messed up.
Sorry, Linda. Well, I agree with everything that Garrett just said. I appreciate everything you do. I appreciate your leadership. Though it is true, the dry cleaning bills would have gone skyrocketed, but we were in this special year, which, you know, a lot of clothes didn't even get taken out of the closet, so there's that. But thank you so much. Obviously, you've been a great support to me throughout the time that I ran my campaign, from when the time I thought about running, and even now. I bounce so many ideas off of you, and I truly appreciate your leadership and your commitment to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus.
Thank you. Linda?
Yeah. And I would add similar thoughts. The fact that the early 2000s around here in Rancho Cordova were kind of rocky, and it wasn't just the chamber. There were several organizations that experienced that same sort of level of turmoil. And Diane came in, and she just absolutely, as they say, righted the ship and put everything back on the course of being the kind of Chamber of Commerce that we had tried to...that we had run during the 90s. You know, not just a golf ball counting Chamber of Commerce. That was curse phrase. We didn't do that. We actually set...we actually helped to set policy. We actually helped to make progress. And Diane has been engaged in making sure that the Chamber has been a part of that, not just partnership, but policy-setting and proactive partnership that we have...that we are enjoying today. And she deserves a huge amount of credit. She came with a great pedigree and has put every drop of that, of her experiences in her previous careers to work to ensure that the Chamber is in the place that it's in today. So we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you all very much.
Any other council members want to... I think we might have actually just lost David. Well, Diane, I just want to, again, thank you for all of your leadership. Again, I mentioned, we met before I ever ran for council. And I wasn't very involved with the Chamber during the previous administrations that people were referring to. But the trajectory of the Chamber in the 10 years that I've worked with you has only gone up. And it's been fantastic getting to know you and getting to work with you. And we hope...we get...we hope that we're giving you another proclamation in 10 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. See how she nodded her head? And then her husband stood up like he's gonna fight me. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I'll just say, it's been a great pleasure working with you. I look forward to many more years with you. I'm at a distance, so I can safely say that. You have revolutionized how our chamber does business, and you brought a lot of experience from different aspects of your life to that job, and we all really appreciate what you have done for the business community in Rancho Cordova. Having spent a decade on that board myself, I understand the challenges that running an organization like that is up against. And I just want to congratulate you on a job well done, and we look forward to the second half of your tenure.
Thanks, David. So with that, we'll move on to item 5.2, which is a proclamation recognizing January 2022 as Tamil Heritage Month. And Councilmember Pulapati's gonna do that one.
I'm really honored to be able to give the proclamation here today in recognition of the Tamil Heritage Month. For those who don't know, Tamil is a language that... It actually means sweet and beauty. And it is one of the oldest living languages in the world, and I think it's the oldest living language in the world. And a lot of Indian languages actually take off based off of Tamil. So here's the proclamation. The Tamil community of the state of California has made significant contribution to our city and state's diverse culture and population, including the preservation and promotion of the rich heritage of the Tamil language. So the Tamil language is widely spoken in India, Sri Lanka, Australia, Canada, Singapore, and many communities. In the month of January, the Tamil community celebrates Thaipongal. This is a four-day harvest festival that coincides with the first day of the month in the Tamil calendar. And the Sacramento Tamil Mandrum welcomes and encourages all people in the city of Rancho Cordova to participate in the celebration and experience their rich heritage. And therefore, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby declare January 2022 as Tamil Heritage Month in the city of Rancho Cordova, and has all people within our community to join in this special observance.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you guys want to come down for a picture?
That would be great. Thank you.
We could...we could spread out. Yeah, I guess.
David and I will wave in the background.
What are we looking at, the big camera? Which camera? Hurry up. Come on.
Come on, right time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Photobomb on Zoom.
Thank you, Robert. Thanks, speech.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Sacramento Tamil Mandrum and the Greater Sacramento Tamil Community, I would like to thank the Honorable City Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable Councilmembers for declaring the month of January as Tamil Heritage Month. I am sure many of you are wondering why Tamil Heritage Month falls in the month of January. January is a very important month for the Tamil community worldwide. During January, members of the Tamil community celebrate Thaipongal, a four-day harvest festival that is equivalent to Thanksgiving in the United States. We celebrate nature, beauty, its plenitude, and the farming community for providing to the world. Pungal has been celebrated at least since the 9th century C. Sharing gifts and food with friends and neighbors, celebrating the role of farmers' livestock in providing food for humanity, heading outdoors and enjoying nature, folk dances, and traditional Tamil sports such as jallikkadu, similar to bull timing, comprise the festivities. January is an appropriate time to celebrate our history, language, culture, and the contributions of the Tamil community to the world and United States, the beautiful country we call home. We have a large Tamil community in Rancho Cordova. On behalf of the Tamil community from Rancho Cordova and the Greater Sacramento area, I am privileged to thank you all for this recognition and proclamation. The gesture means a lot to the Tamil community. Thank you.
Thank you, Monaghar. I wish...I'd like to thank you all for this honorable moment, all the mayor, vice mayor, and everyone. So on behalf of Tamil community, first, I would like to say our sincere thanks to Rancho Cordova City Council for this honorable moment. And also, I would like to share few highlights from the history of Tamil language and its literature. So Tamil is one of the longest surviving written and spoken language in the world. A recent study on excavation site in the state of Tamil Nadu, which is the southern part of India, and by the Indian Government Archaeological Survey states that Tamil is a 2,600-year-old language, and its history starts back from 300 B.C. Please note, I'm talking about a B.C., not A.D. here, okay? Approximately 76 million people around the globe speaks Tamil language. And Tamil is the first printed language in India during the year of 1558. The Tamil language has recognized throughout the world, including U.S. and many school districts in U.S. has approved the study of Tamil language for high school credit. And Tamil language and its literature have been taught at the University of California, Berkeley, for over 40 years. The early Tamil literature dated before 300 B.C. contains anthologies of various poets dealing with many aspects of life, including love, war, social values, and religion. And I would like to recite a few lines in Tamil from one of the ancient literature dated back 600 B.C. from a book called Pattinappalai, which clearly relates to this honorable moment. Please allow me just two sentences to speak in Tamil. The meaning of these two lines is there was a well-civilized city named Madurai where people from different countries and languages were lived together in harmony and peace in those B.C.s. And now, we all witness that this ancient literature come true again on another side of the world where we are here. With that, let me conclude the speech by quoting a famous line from Tamil literature dated back, again, 2,000 years back. What it means, "Every place in this world is my town, and everyone in this world is my relatives and friends." Once again, on behalf of Sacramento Tamil Mandrum and Tamil community of the city of Rancho Cordova, we want to thank mayor, vice mayor, council members for declaring the month of January as a Tamil Heritage Month. I'd like to conclude my thank you note in Tamil by saying, "Walgatamal, Nandri, Vakam." Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to item 6, public comments. Just give us one sec. Public comments?
Can you read the instructions so people via Zoom would know?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, or I can do it.
Got a page break here. No, I got it. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a card to the city clerk. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, press star 9 to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
The city clerk's office received one public comment from Angel Ball via email. That public comment has been made available for the public in the back of the council chambers and has been communicated to the city council as well. The city clerk's office has not received any public comment cards from those in the council chambers, and there are no hands raised in Zoom or by telephone.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item 7, council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Gatewood. Let's see what we all were doing between two days before Christmas and now. Go ahead.
Yes. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. Besides ducking the amazing... Someone in my neighborhood tried to set the whole building on fire with the most thunderous fireworks I've ever heard. It's crazy. The only thing I have done is I talked with some people at the Cable Commission and talked with some people about the library authority and what the next steps are about Rancho Cordova getting its first library actually in the city. And that's about it. Very quiet. Thank goodness.
We'll go with Councilmember Pulapati, 'cause she's in the room too, but... Actually, no, that would have been the order anyways. Go ahead.
Well, I hope everybody had a really good Christmas, you know, and got all the gifts. So you do know that the city has opened its recovery grant for the profit and nonprofit organizations in the city. So if you have hard...any economic hardships because of COVID, please do apply to the recovery grant. And a very Happy New Year. I've had a pretty simple Happy New Year, just... New Year, with my family and try to maintain all COVID restrictions. One thing I want to say is we started the STEM robotics competition. That program is for all the middle schools, all kids residing in Rancho Cordova, and all kids going to school in the city of Rancho Cordova middle schools. So that robotics program is going to be open, I think, till the end of the month. So please spread the word among your friends, kids, to apply for this. This is a really good city-funded program where they're gonna teach you. It's a really fun program where they're gonna teach you, and then you can compete with each other, and there are good prizes where you can win. So if you've not heard about it, reach out to me or the city, and we'll send you the information. And that's about it.
Okay. David, I got you next on the list.
Sir, I have essentially no report. I had family visits from out of town for the entire break. It was really awesome. I did a lot of fun stuff in our community, 'cause our community's got a lot of fun things to show off. They had a great time. We had a great time, and I'm getting into the new work year mode.
Vice Mayor Budge?
First of all, I want to thank Siri and the people from the Tamil community. Their quotes and their sentiments are so much the goal that we've always had here in Rancho Cordova. I love that. I absolutely love the point that every town is my town and every person is my friend. I had a really great time, Donald Ha Ha, reading "Twas the Night Before Christmas" and "Another Story" at the children's museum before Christmas. That was very nice. But my two weeks have personally been very hectic. Some of my kids and I got on an air... or tried to get on an airplane Tuesday morning to go to Tucson to start the process of emptying Mom's house. And of course, Delta, as we've all read, continued and continued, and then finally canceled the flight. So we rebooked on Southwest, where we should have been in the first place. And finally, we all got to Tucson about 3:00 in the morning. Spent two hectic days packing and loading the U-Haul truck, which we then drove back on Thursday and Friday trying to get over the grapevine. And a U-Haul truck is not... And a U-Haul truck is not the most comfortable thing to travel in for 15 or 16 hours. And again, we all got home about 2:30 in the morning, but that was okay on Friday because it was time, it was, we were in time to watch the Alabama and the Georgia games. And don't ask me what I'm going to be doing next Monday night. I want to thank everybody for the fact that we are now in a new year. Wish everybody the best for the new year. Goodness knows, we needed a new year, any new year. And I'm sure we are all feeling a little more optimistic about what might be coming up. So that's my report.
Thank you. I think I'm very much like my colleague, Mr. Sander. I spend a lot of time with family. I did not have city business to really work on, except for one interesting Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve incident near my home. But I can say RCPD is a very professional and well-run organization, and I'm very pleased with the response of something that happened in our neighborhood. But besides that, yeah, I will just say I am sick of seeing Alabama win the national championship, so go Dogs. You may never hear me say that again in my life, Linda, but I am absolutely a Georgia fan for the next week. And again, and Linda knows this because I am a Notre Dame fan. There is no reason that I want to root for Georgia except to see Alabama lose, so.
Yeah, I came back with a 20-pound bulldog statue, Donald. I should lend it to you.
Leave it on my doorstep. We'll put it right next to our Notre Dame flag that we put out for us, for our new coach to lose his first game in horrible fashion, but whatever. That being said, yes, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, we would be very brief. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on the business recovery grant that the council member Pulipati mentioned. This is a grant designed for small businesses that provides up to $40,000 in grant funding for small businesses. So they have to be 25 employees or fewer. And as you know, many of our businesses are, especially small businesses, are still struggling with some of the COVID impact. So in, as part of our overall incentive package and business recovery assistance, we also have a, what we call a business license fee waiver. So any small business with less than 15 employees will also be getting their license renewed at no cost in the year 2022. So those are some of the examples. More is coming in the way of business assistance and business recovery. But those are two of the many of items that the city council had previously approved, and they are going into effect with the onset of the new year. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any comments on the calendar?
We do not have any public comment on the calendar. I do not have, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom or by telephone.
Okay, council, anything that we need to pull?
Hearing none, I will move on. Both consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.7.
Second. Okay. Motion by Budge, second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Council member Gatewood.
Hi.
Council member Sander.
Hi.
Council member Pulipati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi. Okay, yep, we have no public hearing items. We're moving on to item 12.1. Yes. Wow. It's going to go fast tonight. Regular calendar items, we're moving to 12.1, city council work session priorities for 2022. And I'm turning that over to Micah, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor, council, Micah Runner, deputy city manager. This seemed like the first meeting of the year, seemed like a good time to talk about the calendar for 2022 and some of the policy items for discussion and for the intent to lay out the schedule for the year. This is similar to the process that we started last year at our visioning session and the beginning of last year and going through these subjects and potential policy items that are up for discussion for the year and trying to make sure we spread them out throughout the year and saving both kind of resources and time and appropriately laying them out. As you see before you on the slide, this is not meant to be read, but just as an example of what was done last year and all the items that we got through, just to highlight some items, the affordable housing strategy, the planning commission discussions, the mobile home strategies, some of those as highlights that were taken care of on this list. There were a couple that did not get addressed, and they got moved over to the 2022 calendar. But this is what the list looked like at the end of the year. You'll see a little bit of a format change. This was where the format we ended up with to spread it out over the months. But you'll see in the quarterly schedule that, I'll have Kelly go to the next slide, is this is what we started with last year, is this discussion around quarters. We tried to lay it out into the monthly schedule to spread it out a little more. But this is, at least gives us an idea and a target to shoot for for large policy discussion items. Just as a reminder, this is not all of the things that we're going to talk about this year. This is just the larger policy or staff-oriented policy or larger framework policy discussions, development projects, contracts, any other ongoing things that we'll do are not on this list, and those will continue to happen throughout the year. But these are the larger policy discussions that will come up or that we foresee coming up this year. So the idea is to spread out some of these discussions throughout the year. Some of them take a lot of time and effort. You'll see some of this is like the CEIF/CEIF application process. It usually takes a couple meetings. Some of these subjects will go over a couple of meetings from a policy discussion standpoint. We don't expect them to be handled necessarily in one meeting, so we wanted to highlight that. Part of this process is to check in with all of you and make sure, as you look at this list, are there any items that are potentially missing from a larger policy discussion? Are there items you want to maybe rearrange to move up a little bit? Or are there items you want to just remove? Some of those items may not be able to be removed because there may be some legal process or requirement of them, but those are open for discussion. And really, that's the framework by which we wanted you to take a look at this list. This is by no means the last time we'll probably see this list, but this is a good start for planning out our future council conversations around these larger policy items. So with that, I will leave it to mayor and council to have any comments or concerns or thoughts on the proposed schedule.
So let's start with, do we have any public comment for this item?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item, but I do see that Angel just raised her hand, so I'm going to call on.
Let's go ahead and take that comment.
All right, we'll take Angel Ball. Angel, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angel Ball, and I live in the Cordova Vineyards neighborhood. Tonight, I would like to request, if at all possible, that we move the residential over paving enforcement issues to the first quarter. I would like to hear what the issues are and share the issues that I'm having in my neighborhood and then possibly have some sort of community involvement or participation to discover why people are over paving and how we can educate them on, you know, the pluses and minuses to over paving. The other reason that really grabbed me is this may be a deeper conversation, and it may take longer. And if we leave it towards the end of the year, then I feel like it's going to be a whole nother year before we really get to this issue. And then I wanted to also ask if the urban forest master plan was on the 2021 policy discussions, but I don't see it on 2022. And there may be a good reason for that, but I don't know what that reason is. So I was going to ask that we add that in this discussion somewhere. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Angel. Okay, let's start with any questions, folks, on council might have with the calendar? Not necessarily additions or changes, just are there any questions? Because I have one, remind me what the CEIF application is?
That would be the CEF that's been renamed to include investment process. So this is the grant process through our community enhancement fund, process with the community.
Community enhancement.
It's a measure eight.
Measure eight. I'd rather we just call it measure eight, but okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, have.
Go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, I have thought, isn't the, didn't we actually complete or adopt a urban forest plan?
I thought we did.
And that would be why it doesn't appear on next year.
Right?
And I.
I'm looking at our public works, I'm wondering if.
We would have to check into it. I think if the work was completed.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we adopted something. Where's Steve Herrmann?
I don't actually, I don't actually see it on the year-end update, but that's my recollection.
That's what I thought, too.
We'll look into that as far as this.
We have Steve Herrmann in the audience. I don't know if we could move him in as a panelist?
Steve will know.
Or did he just drop off of? No, no, he's there. And he's raised his hand, too. Like, if somebody's going to answer this.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Steve. Go ahead. Steve, we can hear you.
I can't.
Unless that was somebody else. I heard somebody say, "Hi, can you hear me?"
We heard him, but now he's muted.
Yeah, Steve, you're on mute now.
Now, how about that?
Yep. Go ahead.
Beautiful. Thank you. Yeah, we are in the process of completing the urban forest master plan that was part of our Califier grant. And we have done, we're preparing to do a presentation to council, and the grant term ends at the end of March of 2022. So my thought that it would be, it would be more appropriate in a regular council meeting. And we could certainly do it as a policy discussion if that was preferred, but it would be in the next three months.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a discussion to formulate a policy that's already been formulated. You're talking about, we're going to take action in the first quarter. Okay, yeah. So that would.
Correct. Yeah, we're going to present the result.
Yeah. That makes sense, Steve. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for staff? And then we can, we'll provide input and changes or additions or anything after that. But any questions on what's in front of us? Okay, anybody have any additions, things that are missing from this list? Not necessarily where they go, just if there are other things to put on this list.
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Which one of us?
Linda, I'm sorry, you're the only one that said anything.
Yeah, no, I think, I think Siri has one also, but yeah. The one thing I would ask that we add to our list for consideration, it's always been my goal that we would have a civic center and a teen center. Although I called it Incub, like incubator, and wasn't thinking of it. I was thinking of it as a separate location, which is what it's going to be now. But the other thing that we've talked about off and on, which belongs in that category, is a museum. And we have a gentleman over on Bravado who has that enormous collection of military equipment. And we've talked about recreating the wing headquarters at Mather, and that needs to be pursued. But the whole concept of a museum is becoming, from my perspective, pretty important because a lot of us have parents or grandparents that we are losing. And if we lose the assets that they have in their houses that are like museums already, then we will truly have lost something that's important, not only to Rancho Cordova, but also to the United States as a whole. And we're at a point in national museums where you can't send anything to the Smithsonian, and you can't send it to the Air Force Museum at Ryipat because these things will simply go into, as they say of the Smithsonian, the nation's attic, and no one will ever see them. No one will ever be able to access them. I have packed, from my dad's den, the most intense collection of books on aviation history that I have ever seen. And these need to be out in the, along with, along with a variety of models and trophies and awards, the kinds of things that we used to have at Silver Wings Museum at Mather that all went to the Air Force Museum and no one's ever seen again. And it's the most intense collection of aviation history that I have ever seen. And it needs to be where people know that it can be accessed or researched or whatever. And I would appreciate it if we would put the concept of doing a museum around here back on our to-do list.
I don't have any problem with it. The only thing I would remind my colleagues of, this isn't all-encompassing of the things we might talk about or work on, things like the Fisher House or VFW and other things that may not necessarily be on this list. We don't need to add them onto the list in fear that no one will do anything with something if it's not on this list. So I just want to.
Right, isn't that for the city manager priorities, and we're going to like review those stuff as well?
That's part of it, too, but there are projects that are going to continue to move along until the opportunity arises itself that, okay, now we can do that, right? You know, we didn't have a youth or teen center on here two and a half years ago before, and then a church decided to give us a building. Now we have, now we're working on a youth center because, you know, but we didn't plan out 18 months before that that somebody was going to give us something. So just saying that, that I have no problem with, Linda just suggested, I just want to, I just want to remind folks that just because your idea isn't on this list doesn't mean it's not being worked on.
And I understand that, but for instance, it doesn't. I think we've pretty much agreed that a lot of the facilities at Mills Crossing will be either for arts or specific groups of people, for gathering spaces or for performance spaces. And it doesn't really belong under pending items for goals for council committees. So it just needs to be encapsulated somewhere.
Yeah, I would remind you, though, that all five of us agreed that there was going to be a space for the VFW at that site. So some of this, but that's not replacing a museum or a military historical center of some sort at some point. So I am not disagreeing with you in any way, Linda. I just want to remind folks that that there are plenty of things that staff are working on that aren't on the, that aren't on the list in front of you.
And I think as a suggestion, the city council visioning conversation that's happening this year would probably be a good spot for those more project-related conversations. It's more project. These are really more policy and kind of dialogue creation. But I think there is an opportunity probably to add that item to the discussion for the visioning session that is on this list as a bigger topic.
Well, and I mean, I would just share, I think I did it, my last report, our last county city two-by-two, there's pretty much buy-in that there was going to be an interest from a land perspective and a funding perspective of having some sort of Mather Veterans Village 3.0, because I guess we, or 4.0, I guess, right? Because we've had three already. And that may also include a Fisher House, a VFW, and other things as part of that. So, but I think, to your point, there's projects and then there's policy. So any other issues?
Yeah, let's ask Micah. We don't normally wait until March to do visioning.
Actually, council member, Vice Mayor Budge, we typically try to do those in end of January, close February, just at the beginning of the year so we can plan for the budget. This year, we're hoping that we could have one in month of February. We're still working on some dates. I know Stacy has been in communication with all of you to find some available times. But that's the goal. The goal is to, and also just to build on what Micah said, this list is not intended to be a comprehensive list of every policy, even policy discussion, because we have many, many policy issues that come up along the year. These are. These are some major policy discussions that we have received, uh, either an interest or requests from the council, we're pursuing those. It does take a body of work for preparation. But there's also a set of projects and programs that, uh, would be discussed. Some of them are discussed as part of the city manager priorities review and some are in, included as part of the budget discussion. So there are many touch points. This is not the only touch point. We just wanna make sure that we capture some of the major policy discussions and issues.
Yeah, I, I would only, I, I, when we get to moving things around, I, I will admit that I'm probably the one that's been preventing holding that in Q1, but I think I will be able to change my schedule and be a little bit more flexible, um, with my day job. But mainly, that is not staff's fault, that is my fault, um, as far as being available for an entire day for, for one of these meetings. But when we get to moving things around, let, let's get to that. Are there any other additions that folks have? Siri, go ahead.
I've got sort of a discussion about one that could be an addition.
Siri, I'll, I'll, we'll get to you after her.
That's fine.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, taking into consideration the mayor's comments that not, um, everything that's not on here is not, uh, priority. Uh, I still do wanna mention that, um, the middle and high school, uh, south of Sunrise, uh, to be a topic and an urgent need for having that school, given that a lot of residents that I've spoken to are moving, that, one of the key reasons for people moving out of the area and not coming into the area is due to the lack of that school. Um, the other thing that I wanna bring up is, uh, if this probably goes into the city council of visioning, but I do wanna bring it up here, is a, in addition of a diversity and inclusion commission for the city of Rancho Cordova. And, um, what that would do is kind of, you know, bring, uh, more education with regard to our community's diversity. And, um, it's kind of, uh, engage the community, um, get feedback and information that we can in fact turn back to the city, um, and, you know, help us on promoting our rich cultural heritage in new communities better.
I would support that, um, Siri, they have a very successful one in Elk Grove. Unfortunately, it, it grew up because of a tragedy. But, um, when you consider the fact that the community council has a wildly successful international festival, um.
Right.
There might be a real opportunity to merge several efforts together under that kind of a banner.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah.
David, go ahead.
So I'm always looking for the, uh, the strong neighborhood side of our, of our work. You know, obviously, we've got the majority of, uh, of Rancho Cordova is an old suburb, old suburban conditions. So that not only applies to work along Folsom Boulevard or, you know, investment on, on that side of the city, um, but also what sort of policies and, and procedures do we need to keep up to date to deal with those old development issues? That, uh, unfortunately, I mean, this is the reason for our incorporation by and large, the sort of decline we saw in, in those areas that were developed under county jurisdiction and they didn't really have a very, uh, modern view of, uh, of how to maintain places that had been developed or how to, how to be sure that they were healthy going forward. So we find ourselves with lots of issues. And the things that I see on here that are, are reflective of that would be the, uh, the discussion about over paving, uh, residential over paving, as I was listed here. Given that that happens early in the year quite often, that's not uncommon to see spring work being done, uh, when people merge their driveways and pave their front yards to park things there. Um, and I know our code enforcement folks are struggling with that. They have been for years. Uh, I'm wondering why, uh, I'm thinking perhaps we should move that up to a, to an earlier discussion. Um, my, myself, I've heard complaints from, I think, probably three or four people that I passed on to staff just in the past couple of months about over paving sort of incidents. So I know it's, I know it's going on, um, and it's, I don't think it's really debatable. It, it damages the appearance of a neighborhood when that happens. Cause often you're losing a tree, you're losing the lawn, you've got more cars stored between the street and the house now. It's, um, it's hard to portray that as a, as a net positive, um, in most cases. So I think that is something that's, uh, particularly important to that majority of, uh, of Rancho Cordova. I think the other things that fall into this category would be the storage shipping container enforcement issues and the auto uses on commercial corridors. And that one, that one in particular, auto uses on commercial corridors, I think perhaps we oughta broaden and I, and I might even retarget towards, you could call it beautification of corridor, corridor beautification. We have in de facto done this on, on parts of Folsom Boulevard in a couple of different ways. And there's still a lot of work to be done there. But there's also work to be done along Coloma and along Sunrise. If you think about all those new neighborhoods growing up, uh, in the southern part of Rancho Cordova and driving up and down Sunrise Boulevard seeing auto uses, uh, intense auto uses there, um, that are, that are a relic of the previous edge of, edge of, uh, urban area that that area represented before housing was built. There, there are a lot of beautification issues there and, and I don't think, um, you know, beautification ought to ever have sort of a backseat in terms of state priorities. People might see that and say, oh, great, we're gonna worry about how attractive something is. Well, how attractive something is relates to how much crime occurs there. It also relates to property values and economic success and economic, uh, diversity and success for the populations that live nearby. It's all tied together. I mean, it's all, basically it ties into school test scores for that matter. So dealing with those, those old suburban issues, I would like to see us move something like maybe that beautification discussion up earlier so we can have a little more staff work on, on that front. An interest and sort of staff feedback on that. We've talked about it for years, we've just never, never prioritized it. And as I look at this layout this year, it seems like this might be the year to take that on.
Well, David, you broke my rule. I was saying additions for, so I don't think I heard anything added to the list, but you did start getting into moving things around.
It's a rename anyway.
Okay. Um, for auto uses on commercial quarters, I think I heard that. But in looking at this, I, 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 I don't personally have anything to add to this. So my, my first suggestion, I'm sorry, Garrett.
No, go ahead, I'm gonna go to you.
Um, if I, just on what David brought up that I, I just wanna kind of point out here, you have a zoning code update that I'm guessing might take into account some of these other policies here. But, uh, as far as noise standard, shipping containers, auto use, residential pave over, maybe even reimagining the office park, may all funnel into a Q4 discussion on a zoning code update. I don't know if I'm wrong about that, but it sounds like a handful of these, we might wanna have the discussion before we get to the point of adopting the code.
I, I would say you are correct as far as a lot of these, if there are changes to be made, they would fall under a zoning code update and amendment. And so.
Right.
Um, it does make some sense to maybe talk about some of these things before.
The policy discussions in the preceding quarters.
Correct.
So we can finish our work in the, in Q4. Um, Coloma Road would be another one, um, sort of a handful of other ones here that I see. But the one thing that we always have to remind ourselves is everything can't be in Q1 and Q2. Um, and there's a reason that you have this many listed here is that I'm guessing there's only so many that staff can pull off in time. So the other thing to remind everybody is just because something isn't in Q1 or Q2 doesn't make it important, doesn't mean it's not important or that it's not a priority. That being said, if I look at Q1, I think ARPA and Measure R are things we, we have to do because we have to figure out what to do with the money or we have to give it back, um, at least with ARPA. Um, and I think the mobile home item has been something we have worked on to the point where somebody who was pushing this isn't even alive to see it happen. So I would definitely like to see that sooner rather than later. And I don't know, I, David or somebody else might wanna disagree with me, but I think homelessness and housing is still the, the odds-on biggest issue that we hear from our, our constituents about. So yeah, as far as moving things around, I, 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 I'm not sure exactly what the, the mix would be of this. Um, but I would think at least in Q3, we would wanna load that with a lot more policy discussions that are in there that may become part of a zoning code. Or even as we talk about Q4, we're, we're saying that the comprehensive zoning code is like November and the rest of these are gonna be early Q4 or late Q3, something like that, to at least get them before you take action on the, the item.
Yeah, and I think.
Okay, Donald, you have a point. Accept that, accept that. Some of these things like the residential over paving have been problems since 2003 and they have been in the zoning code the entire time. And we don't have a good mechanism for enforcing it and that's really the issue. It's not, it's not whether or not we have a, a code or standard for something. Um, it has to do with how do we educate the public and how do we keep it from happening? And the curious thing, I'm, I, I, I understand Angel's point, but the biggest violations occurred in new neighborhoods right off the bat. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't, um, long-time neighborhoods in Rancho Cordova. It was brand-new neighborhoods where people filled up their garages and declined to park in them. So, you know, anywhere you look at it, everything that, that Angel and Siri and, uh, David have said is really valid. But you, you have a good point about not trying to do everything right at the beginning.
Which is what we always try to do, is to get whatever thing we wanted to work on in Q1. And we just, we can't do that. And some of these have timeline, I mean, Mills Crossing, we're already behind what the agreed timeline was by quite a bit now, I think.
Big projects always take time.
So I, I think there's some, if there's some consensus on just moving, we don't have to figure all the kind of this belongs in this quarter, but if there's some consensus around moving some things up and, and we can relook at kind of how that lays out, um, I think that would be helpful to get that kind of direction. We don't need to necessarily put it in a quarter, but we could say, hey, we'd like to move some of these kinda neighborhood or this issue up, we can kind of work on, kind of spreading some of these out a little differently as well.
I, just to, to add to, to this, this has always been viewed as a, as a fluid list because issues come up, urgent issues come up and we have to modify them. This is just to give you an idea about, on the body of work that needs to be done, on set of priority discussions that we need to have. And, uh, also reiterate what the, uh, Vice Mayor Butch said, not every single one of these is necessarily a policy discussion. Some of these are, we do have policies. I think the, the corridor upgrades and the revitalization policies are still in place, but some of them are a matter of enforcement and, and what do we do in, in, in the way of compliance with the residents? So, so there are some specific mechanical discussions that, that we need to have along the way on some of these issues.
I would also say that we probably want a couple of open boxes here cause you never know when the next church is gonna show up and try to donate it to us. And we take it, an idea that we thought was 10 years away, which was a new Boys and Girls Club, and we're getting it in three years. So there are other things that might come up along the way that, you know, you, you wanna leave some space for. But that was my only feedback as far as, as far as timing and I, I think you just articulated it well. Any other comments or input on timing or, or the calendar?
Yeah, I was hoping to, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
I was hoping to see something on, um, the, we were gonna have a, something on the creation of the Rancho Cordova or school district of some sort. And we were gonna do a study on that and tell me what was gonna go into taking that on.
And I would suggest that for the, uh, visioning session.
Okay, visioning session.
Get feedback as to whether or not that's something that.
Yeah, it was doable. Is that, that's not a policy discussion, that's more of a how, is that at the visioning session?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where I would suggest it.
Okay. Um, what about, um, the annexation of cities into Rancho Cordova? Where would you see that at?
I would, I mean, the only time we've ever really discussed that since I've been on council is only at the visioning session. Uh, it's never come for a policy workshop in nine years I've been on the council.
Yeah, I think this could be part of the visioning discussion. So maybe, um, along those lines, you know, with some of these significant major topics, we probably do need a full day, um, potentially even a multi, multi-day.
Well, yeah, because you have to go get. Right. Because you were gonna find out how to do it. I didn't know if that was here or that's visioning session.
No, so I, 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 I think you're a little ahead of yourself with both of those subjects. Getting the council to agree that that is a priority for staff to work on, that's not a policy discussion. Policy discussion is what do we wanna do? I mean, it's kind of the same lines of the high school, middle school and Elk Grove. We don't control that.
Right.
So it's not a policy for us to discuss what we may direct staff to work on or to research and to help us come up with a plan or what we do. But, you know, Folsom Cordova, changing their boundaries is not our policy. It is not a policy of the city. Another government entity that, you know, the park district, you know, them fixing a pool, them coming to us and asking us for money is one thing, which we did. But there's not a policy around how we interact with CRPD, right? So.
Gotcha.
So some of those discussions are what are we prioritizing staff to work on? Because, uh, I'm, a lot of you heard me say this, if everything is a priority, nothing's a priority.
Right, of course.
We just throw out all of our ideas and say, go work on everything.
So what would you consider, like, talking about the airport, visioning?
The airport?
Yeah.
From a zoning standpoint, you're saying, or annexation? Yeah, that, that would be a visioning.
Okay, all right, I'm good, thank you. Most of my stuff's gonna be in visioning.
And, and, uh, uh, this has been helpful actually to start for that agenda as well as far as figuring out what needs to be.
What's gonna be on the visioning agenda as well?
So this has been helpful.
Yeah. Um, any other comments or directions to staff on the cal, on the policy calendar? And again, to, to Mike's point, this is a fluid process. As the work gets done, as opportunities arise, this calendar could change.
Oh, uh, one more. Um, remember when we had that, um, incident where we were trying to decide how much money we were gonna save in the city and what was an emergency and a policy that says how much we should actually have and where we can put the money in? Is that a policy to say like, I wanna land bank instead of doing it the way we've been doing it in the past?
Um, I, we could have a discussion, that would be a policy level discussion.
I would think so.
As far as what our investment strategies are. I would say when you get to the point around, uh, what do they call it? What, what do you guys call on it now, the banking initiative? I have to leave the room for that part of it. But we, you could, we could have that conversation. I will say that I've had these conversations with, with Kim before. And some of the ideas around land as investments or savings, um, don't meet certain accounting standards to be able to count it like that. So they're, they're just, there's not an ability to do that. I will say that, um, from a reserve standpoint, we are very, we, we, we're very healthy when it comes to that. And so, um, yeah, that, that, that would be something, an investment and, and savings policy.
And we can do that.
Cause that is a policy of the council.
And we can do that in quarter four. I'll take quarter four, final quarter.
Well, May, I think, uh, just, just a reminder, as part of our recent, uh, reserve policy, this topic did come up and, uh, we committed to finding ways to making appropriate investments in land. It's not that we'll just go buy land for the sake of buying land. Uh, there are some, uh, regulations, estate regulations that affect city owning land and the disposition of the land. So we have to be very careful with it. But the reserve policy, I think we, we felt we received proper direction from the council or the, the, the direction we needed to pursue a policy at, at that level.
Maybe a revisiting of it.
If we need to revisit, I would be happy to.
As an agenda at some point.
Quarter four, please.
Okay.
And do we need a, a policy on our technology? To advance us and make sure that we're on top of it and going out and being aggressive about getting new technology for the staff and as a group? Do you feel like that's something we need to set and be like, look, we're looking to improve on these things through a policy? And we always wanna make sure that we're at the cutting edge, not the bleeding edge? You know, Siri and I know a lot about this and should we have a policy saying that this is what we're looking to always make sure is in place?
So you're volunteering for a subcommittee? Is that what I just heard?
You did hear that, Siri volunteered for a technology subcommittee.
Hold on, are we talking about the infrastructure for the city? Or we're talking about getting more?
Yes.
Into, into the city, which actually means more revenue, more jobs, more business. So that's two-pronged.
Yes, that's, that's a technology, yes. Yes.
Which?
Yes.
He brought it up and don't ask me.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So when he says, yeah, okay, so when he, when Garrett, Councilmember Garrett says yes, um, they're two-pronged. Uh, one is interest bringing the cutting-edge technology to the city of Rancho Cordova as a garment to this building. The other part, which I am absolutely passionate about, is getting more tech companies to the city of Rancho Cordova, which means, you know, it's gonna be, get more businesses, more jobs, better restaurants, better, more, better housing, you know. more jobs, better restaurants, better, more, better housing, you know, all, all, all good stuff to the school.
I agree.
To the city, so.
So, so we, we're just a comment in council. I think the first topic is an operational issue. That's typically not the realm of the city council, but the second obviously is a, is an economic development strategy, and we could cover that as part of our, we have that, I believe, in our quarter three discussion as part of economic development. We can wait that long and, and discuss that at that time, but I do believe, I think the prior discussion on this was the formation of Technology Council, that I believe Councilmember Gatewood.
Why don't you say Mayor Gatewood? Go ahead, say it.
Mayor Gatewood had committed to do so, and so if that's still an interest on part of the council, we can discuss it and, and continue the dialogue. But I just want to be clear that on operational issues and, you know, the, making sure the staff has the tech, the right technology is something that really has to be dealt with at my level, not the council level.
Well, that's not 100% true. I hear what you're saying, but telling you that I always want the top technology is a policy level. That would, deciding on whether the difference between a Mac and a PC and what should be in the environment is your discretionary. But if I tell you that I want the top highest level of technology and making sure you have a policy, so when you come back to say, Garrett, well, you told me to buy the highest-end software, so I did, that would be a policy discussion, correct?
And that's typically a budget conversation.
That's, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Right, so. Nah? No?
So, I, my, in my opinion, I don't disagree with anything. He just said that, that at the administration level, it's kind of the same question, does your board of directors weigh in on the kinds of phones that you decide to put in your office?
No, but they always say, I want you to make sure you're pushing to go get the highest level, so.
But, but to his point, and, and a lot of times when it's talking, when, when you're talking about resource allocation and budget, my two cents is with any organization that I interact with, don't give me a mission statement, don't, don't tell me your priorities, hand me your budget, and I'll tell you what your priorities are. And our top priority is public safety, because that's what we spend the most amount of money on, and then second is probably public works, and then, you know, trash collection, because those are the main services that we offer, right? And so, you can talk about how, like, how much we spend on techno, technology, how much should we be spending on technology relative to the budget and other things like that?
So, it's more of a budgetary.
But it's a, it's a budget discussion.
Okay, so if I want them to have a higher level of technology and make sure that they're at the premium.
Yeah, but, but let's also, you know, you know, don't do what the Defense Department does, which is just, you know, let's, let's order a whole bunch of tanks because they get made in a certain state.
Can we get a tank for the city of Rancho?
But my point is, is that they buy tanks because they're made in, in a certain state, not because the Defense Department's asking for them. So.
But I don't ever want him to be here.
No, no, I understand, but I'm just saying, we don't want to arbitrarily say, we want to spend more money on technology, therefore he goes out and buys a bunch of laptops we don't need. Right? So, we also want to be careful how we implement a policy like that.
Garrett, this is the government. They don't need bleeding-edge technology in the first place.
We just need functionality.
I said, oh, wow.
So.
Please don't say that, because we are truly going trying to.
You do, but I'm saying on, on the level that, you know, like you said, the defense.
I want a VR system so that I can virtually be here.
But to the, to your part, on economic development in Q3, Cyrus, I think that's a discussion we can start having. I, I agree, it might be a part of the discussion in Q3, but that's definitely a conversation we can have ongoing throughout.
I think one of the things.
Siri, thank you for bringing us back to, bringing us back to the chart.
I think the economic development piece is really, partly is trying to figure out where we're going to land on some of the changing in the business world as far as space and usage, and so, there's going to be a certain timeframe of, of what does the new kind of economy look like and what the different pieces are, and so, we don't want to rush into it too fast to coming up with a new strategy too early when we're not really sure what the ultimate impact is of some of the different changing environments that we see out there, whether it's transitioning some of the offices, the residential, whether it's, you know, different, you know, strategies on coworking and virtual working and all the different things.
I, I mean, the strategy for the last 30 or 40 years in business parks have been to attract businesses that bring as many people as possible to work, and I would argue that the companies we, you were just talking about are probably the least likely to send people back to the office, right? Comparatively to other areas.
That's why, that's why, including the reimagining the office park and the economic development strategy at the same time are really good partners.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, what's really fascinating, if you look at the last couple of years, I think one of the reasons our restaurants and other services have fared a little bit better than other parts of the region is our industrial park, none of them went home. There's not a way to send home manufacturing and a lot of other things that we have, but you can remote from home if you're an insurance company. And we've got a whole bunch of healthcare and insurance companies right down the street, and their parking lots have been empty for two years. So, as we talk about what we want to engage in and bring here, I mean, it's one of the reasons that San Francisco is one of the only places in the, in California that rent's going down, because everybody can leave now. So, just, we want to be careful. I'm not saying that we don't want to attract those kind of companies, but those kind of companies might not come with employees that actually move here or work here.
So, I don't think we need a motion?
Do we need a motion, or we just need to give? No, I'm, I'm seeing, staff is saying no. Micah, you got what you need?
Yeah, I think, you know, we got some direction on some different, maybe efforts to move, but as Cyrus mentioned, this is a living document, and we're, this is the goal, and we'll provide updates, and we got some ideas for the visioning session when that comes up, and we're trying to also move that up as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we will have the visioning session in, in February.
Correct, yeah. And I also anticipate that we will be talking about this list at that time, and maybe every other month or so, we will bring this list and make adjustments as necessary.
So, I think the only additions that I heard really, there were some changes from David, an addition of a diversity and inclusion commission, right?
Yeah, and I think some of those would be as part of the visioning session, and then we'll probably talk about this list as part of the overall visioning discussion, and we may add and subtract or move some things along along that time, too.
Okay. You're off.
Do you review the, the policy for land baking and on the fourth quarter?
We can do that, but also keep in mind that, you know, we are going to pass a budget in June, so there is time between now and then. So, that, that's an ongoing thing that's not, no, no, are we mid-year? No, we're mid-year, that's right.
Yeah, we're the second year of a three-year budget.
Darn two-year, okay, yeah, Q4 we'll do it. Thank you. Um, with that, we'll move on to item 12.2, and our city manager is going to step out of the room. You didn't know? Oh, we'll show you that in a minute. So, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova approving a 5% performance incentive pay increase for Cyrus Appar for services as city manager. Any discussion, actually, any public comment on this?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom or by telephone.
This is not a public hearing, so I don't have to open anything. Anybody want to make a motion?
So, moved.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Gatewood in the room. I'll take that motion as a second for Budge online.